You good? Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Sander is absent. Councilmember McGarvey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
And Mayor Terry.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Clerk, will you please read the TV announcement?
This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Saturday, September 9th at noon, and Sunday, September 10th at 11:00 a.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and will be led today by Mr. Anil Reedy. And you can do it just by standing there. And then I'd like to ask the audience to remain standing for our invocation, which tonight will be given to us by Clinton Shaw from the Judah God's House of Praise. You start? Go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, one God, in his name, with all his justness. Pastor.
We're so thankful for being here in the midst of you. Thank God for being here with us. Father God, we thank you for this awesome meeting that is about to proceed. We thank you for the leaders of this great city, Rancho Cordova, California. Thank you for the mayor, Mayor Donald Terry, and vice mayor. We're so grateful to be here. We ask that you would just have your way in the midst of us. We thank you for your hand as upon this city. Thank you for the community. Thank you for the love in this city. We thank you because you are God of love. You're not a God of hatred. But Lord, we just look to you as we gather together in your name. We thank you for all of those that are here. And Lord, whatever this meeting is concerned about, that there be peace in the midst of it, and you stand, and you guide, and you lead. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to presentations. We have two presentations tonight. The first is a proclamation recognizing Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, given to Richard Montgomery. Do we have Richard in the audience? If you want to step forward, sir. And it'll be presented by Councilmember Gatewood.
How you doing? It's my first proclamation. All right, that's what I was just writing. The proclamation is given in recognition of Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, September 2017, whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in the men aside from skin cancer, and it's estimated one in eight men will develop this disease in their lifetime. The American Cancer Society estimates that there will be 161, 360 new cases of prostate cancer in the U.S. in 2017, resulting in an estimated 26,730 deaths. That's just terrible. It is estimated that 14,502 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer. 3,130 California men will die from this disease. Whereas African-American males have the highest prostate rate, have the prostate cancer incident rates in the world, and their death rates are twice as high as other ethnic groups. Early prostate cancer is usually no symptoms, and the studies suggest a strong family lineage will be responsible, 5% to 10% of the disease cases. And advanced prostate cancer is commonly spread to the bones, in which can cause pains in hips, spines, ribs, and other areas. The five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops 29% when it spreads to other parts of the body. Treatment options for prostate cancer vary depending on the man's age, state, grade of cancer, and was his other non-existing medical conditions. The American Cancer Society recommends that men should have the opportunity to make informed decisions, whereas to be tested for prostate cancer based on personal values and preferences. Whereas the City of Rancho Cordova joins to community across the nation, increase awareness about the importance of men to make informed decisions with their health, care provider, early detection, and testing for prostate cancer. The City of Rancho Cordova, the City Council, and the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby designate September 2017 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. I have set my hand and seal the City of Rancho Cordova, and fix it on September 5th, 2017. Donald Terry. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
That's a long-winded "whereas."
That was one of the longer ones I've seen.
Yes, I know. Anyhow, just to like to reinforce a couple of our line items. Number one, I'm a walking example. I'm a 20-year survivor of prostate cancer, and mainly because I was tested early and I got treated early. I don't, I wouldn't like to think my treatment was the best in the world at the time, but it was, at that time, there were no options. Today, a lot of options. So, the message is prostate cancer has no symptoms, so get tested early, get tested regularly, establish a benchmark, and pay attention. A lot of discussion goes on between doctors and say, you know, you shouldn't do it. I'm an advocate of getting started testing for men, African-Americans in particular, by 40, maybe Caucasians by 45. And the only test now is not the world's greatest, but it's the only one we got called a PSA, and it's a small, simple blood test, takes nothing to make it happen. They're coming up with a lot of new tests, which will hopefully avoid men with strange signs and getting biopsies. So, that's an improvement. But as I said, these days, there are a lot of different treatment options that people need to be aware of. I chair a group in Cameron Park. I work with UCD with newly diagnosed patients, and the biggest thing is to get the man educated. And most men don't like to talk about this little thing, so I usually insist that they bring the wife along, who will take notes, pay attention, and ask questions. As opposed to the men who do none of it. Anyhow, thank you very much for, once again, supporting us with a proclamation.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Richard, thank you so much for coming. Almost every family has been touched by prostate cancer, and they often say that, and it may have said in all those words, but they often say that the longer a person lives, the more likely they are to contract it. So, you're absolutely right. Everybody should know about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard.
Item 9.1, we have Stacy Delaney here to do some more Community Enhancement Fund checks. I see Stacy. That's what I'm guessing most of you are here in the audience for. It's just a guess.
It's probably a good guess. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and staff. I'm Stacy Delaney, and I'm the city's Community Enhancement Analyst. This evening, we are presenting ceremonial checks to several of the groups that received Community Enhancement Fund grants in fiscal year 1718. These projects and programs support local Rancho Cordova priorities, including education, youth, the arts, entertainment, and public safety. Mayor and councilmembers, please come down and join these groups as they receive their The first check being presented this evening is for the Mobile Country Club HOA Neighborhood Association for the Printing of an Emergency Evacuation Plan for the residents of the Mobile Country Club. This plan increases the safety of residents of the city. Residents of the Mobile Country Club are hosting an event on Saturday, September 30th at 11:30 a.m. to celebrate the successful culmination of several Community Enhancement Fund projects, including the Emergency Evacuation Plan. Residents Bob and Carol Schroeder and Antonio Martinez are accepting the check for $500.
You got to stand.
And she'll take your picture right here. The second check is for Ankar Inc. to bring two multicultural events to the city. The Festival of Color and the Festival of Knowledge will provide residents with unique opportunities for multicultural education and experiences. Stay tuned for more information on these two events, which are scheduled to take place in Rancho Cordova in February and March 2018. Jeet Padar and Abhi Bhattacharya are accepting the check for $6,000. The third check is for mosaic artist Robin Moyer. Robin, a talented local artist, will create mosaic wraps for planters at Mayfair Veterans Village. The creation of the public art will enhance the environment of Mayfair Veterans Village, the first permanent supportive housing for homeless veterans with disabilities in the region. Robin is accepting the check for $10,000. And there's one more announcement I would like to make. There's information in the back, found in this magazine. There's going to be six local artists participating in the Sacramento Open Studios, which is in September. So if you'd like to find more information about those artists and the dates, please find it in the back of this room. The fourth check is for the Sacramento Telangana Association to hold a Festival of Flowers in the city. This is another unique cultural event that promotes multicultural education and experiences in the city. The event is happening on Saturday, September 23rd, at Navigator Elementary School. The event is free and open to the public. It starts at 5:00 p.m., so please join them. Anil Kondakrindi and members of the Sacramento Telangana Association are accepting the check for $14,600.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, and city staff, and my fellow citizens, we are extremely grateful that the city is recognizing our event, and now this became a city event. This is the third year we are conducting this event. We started with 500 people as this event. Last year, it touched 1,500, and it projected our city image down in Bay Area, Central Valley, California. People are coming from Stockton, Fresno, and Modesto. And this is our promise to the city and the community. We make this as a real multicultural integration project, the spreading the peace and love. The specifics of this festival is recognizing the and honoring the women, our sisters, mothers, daughters. This is all about women. We need to bring more women into representation, to election bodies, and the business, and the community. That is all we want to project. So, on this occasion, we requested all the city, especially women's staff, to be present on the day. Also, the city council, we have only one representation as a woman from city council, but she's going to see her mom on the day. We are going to miss her. But I request we need a full presentation from the city staff on the day. It's going to be one of the huge event. We are also trying to bring a governor candidate, John Chang, this time, to the event. So, please, everybody and all my citizen friends, please be at Navigator Elementary School at 5:00 p.m. It even goes from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The fifth check this evening is for the Folsom-Cordova Community Partnership, for both an expanded youth mentoring program for students in Rancho Cordova, and to create an artistic mural reflecting the diversity of the community. The group mentoring program will assist students in making positive gains in life skills, work and study skills, and preparing for adulthood. The artwork, which will adorn their walls, will be viewed by thousands of people each month, and will create a warm environment which promotes civic pride and engagement. Robert Singer is accepting the check for $30,000. And last but not least, the Rancho Cordova Whisker Warriors is continuing an award-winning flea prevention, spay neuter, and vaccination program for dogs, cats, and domesticated rabbits of residents in the city. The program funding also includes the care of homeless cats. The program helps reduce pet overpopulation. It cares for abandoned cats and prevents diseases in the pet population. Tara Kolvembach and her fellow Whisker Warriors are accepting the check for $35,000.
And thus concludes probably the longest portion of our meeting tonight. Congratulations to everybody. We look forward to hearing all the great things you're doing with that money. Moving on to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent agenda or not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called upon to the podium by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provision of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature, or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comment cards?
Yes. We have a public comment card for Brayden Murphy. Brayden, if you'll come forward.
Yeah, we can hear you. Hello, Mayor and Council. I go to numerous government meetings, and almost always, I lay into the council or whatever it is about, things that I think need to be fixed. But here tonight, I'm here to say a positive thing, which is that the kids that graduate from Rancho High School, being able to go to college, community college in Folsom, for the first year is an absolutely amazing thing. It's an incredible thing that deserves acknowledgement. I'm in many groups, following local politics, and they're telling me where I need to go and where to lay into people, and when I saw that, it was just so amazing, and I couldn't believe it. And then the whole, community enhancement as a whole, is just really amazing, and you guys should be just really proud of all the things you're doing, you know? Somebody that goes to college is so much less likely to become homeless, or have children out of wedlock, or all the stats are good, and that's such an amazing thing. And I went to Folsom Community, or Folsom Lake College, so that touches me closely. I'm someone who lives in Folsom, and next year, I'm going to be running for the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District School Board, and this is an amazing tool, if it continues to be able to use, and a lot of the ideas I have in what I'd like to see the district progress forward. And so, I'm just really proud of you guys for doing some positive stuff, and I seen I've been following a lot of health things you guys are trying to encourage. So, a really good job by this city, and I don't think I've really went to a government meeting where I've ever said that. And Stacy was very friendly also, from the moment I walked in. She asked me what I needed and stuff. So, really good job to you guys, and congratulations on all that.
Thank you very much. But feel free to come back and lay into us if there's something we end up doing wrong. And we do thank our voters for entrusting us with the Community Enhancement Fund and Measure H. So, without that, we wouldn't have been able to make those types of investments. So with that, was that the only?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Gatewood.
I went to the Whisker Warrior Fund. That was a lot of fun. My wife bid on everything, literally everything, and lost. Thank goodness. Everything, almost everything. So, I really appreciate what you're doing in our city. Straight cats and taking care of that is a full-time thing, and it really shows a heart of our city, and thank you a lot. And it was fun.
Well, I wasn't able to go to the, thanks to the kids giving the cards to our police and the condolences for our officer French, who lost his life in the line of duty. But it was very nice and great of the kids to be able to do that. And also, I want to have anybody who has a chance to go to the Capitol Air Show, to please come to that. If you haven't gone, and I've been talking to some people who haven't been to the Capitol Air Show, and it's all 11 years of what they haven't been, hopefully, you can go, because there's so many good things that are going on right now for kids to go and learn and see about the sciences of the Aerojet from the Air Force, from go to the planes and see what the huge planes can do. It's just so many things good there at the Capitol Air Show. So, those who can go, I hope you will, and if you haven't been before, give it a try. I think you'll really like it.
So, Donald and I were pleased to host, along with Cyrus, we hosted a lunch for regional mayors and vice mayors, and actually got a great turnout. We had the vice mayor come from Stockton, and people come down from as far as Live Oak. It's just an opportunity for us to share on a large and a regional basis, all of the issues that we're dealing with, you know, whether it's hearing what's going on in the, with the fire situation, or with the Oroville Dam, or talking about more local, immediate things such as homelessness. It gives us all an opportunity to share all those different ideas. And actually, Brandon, I will tell you that the mayor of West Sacramento spoke about their version of the promised program, and it's a little bit different from ours, but here again, we think we can learn from what they're doing in West Sacramento, and by that same token, he felt that they could pick up some of the parts of what we're doing here in Rancho Cordova. So, it's just kind of seeding the whole region and making that influence reach farther out. We all participated in giving the airshow tickets to all the schoolchildren, which was absolutely delightful. I know that somebody out there probably had the helicopter practically come down in their backyard. I heard from one lady who just thought that was the most fascinating thing, but people opened their gates and their back fences and came out to see what was going on, and the little kids walked over from Williamson and joined the older kids from Mitchell Junior High, and then we all divided into teams and went to all of the elementary schools in Rancho Cordova. So, we know that, as Bob says, there will be 3,500 students and their families from Rancho Cordova schools who get to go and experience the opportunity to engage in activities in science, technology, engineering, math, and the arts in person. And you can sit out in the park and watch it, and that's fine, but there's nothing like being hands up close, where you can touch that airplane, because these kids are going to be the ones who are on that first mission to Mars, and that's what we're after. I spoke at a graduation ceremony for one of our local private colleges, and thoroughly enjoyed hearing, I've forgotten what the number, and Ashley's not here, I've forgotten what the number of students were, but it was so rewarding to hear all of these people talk about what it took to get them to that point, to actually graduate in a skill. And we came away with some to-dos for us here at the city and at the Chamber of Commerce. These are people who are graduating with certificates and expertise in sheet metal, in electronics, in a variety of counseling, both drug counseling as well as mental health counseling, and another health certificate as a health aide, a health assistant in a doctor's office. And it gave us an opportunity to give them ideas on where to go to get a job, so that they can use those skills that they've learned, and stay right here in Rancho Cordova, not only grow their own personal economy, but help to grow our city economy as well. Yes, there was an awful lot going on that one particular Saturday night, and I participated in the Rotary Poker Night, which raises money for three different organizations in town. And also went to a ribbon cutting for our second section of sidewalk. Rancho Cordova, as we all know, was, is a city that was built at a point in time when sidewalks were not always required by the building code or by the lender, and so we have a lot of town that didn't get sidewalks, and we're trying to rectify that, again with our Community Enhancement Fund and the other funds that Albert is able to scrape together. And we had 1.5 miles of sidewalk that affected seven streets in the area around Rancho Cordova Elementary. And so now those kids, it was also Safe Roots to Schools money. So now those kids have an easy way to walk to school and to walk to the park, which is adjacent to the school, and we're really pleased to be able to do that kind of thing. And that's my report.
Okay. So, first, I want to thank Lorian and Stefan from the city staff that helped facilitate a conversation. We're going to have another one later this week for the Bloomberg Mayor's Challenge, ahead of our Accelerator Workshop that we're going to be doing to come up with a new and innovative project to apply to the Bloomberg Mayor's Challenge this year. So, former Mayor Bloomberg has committed, I believe, $200 million to this cause worldwide, but they've opened it up to a lot more grants. It used to be like three grants a year. It's going to be 35 grants of $100,000, a couple $1 million grants, and then I think a $5 or $10 million top grant. So, we're, the city right now, we're one of 100 that will, where they're going to send out a facilitator from the foundation to actually help us come up with the idea. But we've been doing some preliminary work on it that I think is really exciting. I attended on behalf of the city the first Lower American River Conservancy meeting. So this is a new entity that was created through legislation in the last legislative cycle that Ken Cooley and Kevin McCarty carried, and it creates one of the first conservancies around here, and the state put $1 million in to start the conservancy for different projects in the Lower American River Parkway area. And I believe we got, I'm trying to remember the exact number, but I believe that they hadn't adopted it last week, but the park bond that ultimately is going to go on the bout, I believe is, includes $20 million for the American River Parkway, that would go into the conservancy that would then be, would fund different projects. We picked Jeff. hadn't adopted it last week, but the park bond that ultimately is going to go on the bout, I believe includes $20 million for the American River Parkway that would go into the conservancy that would then be, would fund different projects. We picked Jeff Harris as the chair and Don Nattoli as the vice chair. There's three seats from the county. We have one seat. There's a governor appointee, a speaker appointee, Department of Natural Resources appointee, and a senate appointee. And the governor and the secretary had picked theirs, and I believe maybe the senate did. There is a couple, there are a couple of seats that still had to be picked. There should be some more information as far as applying for the $1 million by the end of the year. We still need to adopt the criteria. Staff really had their first meeting to basically explain who's doing what. The staffing is the Board of Wildlife Conservation at the state is who's actually we're a part of. So as I get more information, I'll make sure to share it with staff and with council. And again, this was the first kind of organizational meeting that they've had so far for. David and I attended a Folsom-Cordova Unified Two-by-Two. This was our first opportunity to sit down face-to-face with the new superintendent, hear some of her thoughts about the district, share some of our thoughts and concerns and ideas that we have. It seems really promising. I think she comes in with probably a little bit more of a reform mind than Debbie did or previous superintendents that I've interacted with with Folsom-Cordova. Her background is definitely probably more weighted to a community with the demographics of Rancho Cordova than it would be from Folsom. But remains to be seen kind of what she learns and kind of what she decides to kind of focus on in the time that she's the superintendent. But it was a good, positive, productive conversation. I want to thank Stacy Leitner and Andrea Malins and everybody else on the staff that helped put together the Regional Mayor's Luncheon. We did have really great turnout. That was a lot of work to get put together. And one of the fascinating things is I've learned that whoever the host mayor is, you have to pick what the topics are for everyone to talk about. So we had a very robust conversation around affordable housing and affordability, and maybe some approaches that the region may want to take in addressing some of those issues. I think, Lynda, you actually brought up, I think you kind of challenged Daryl about what should we be doing there, which I thought was great.
And my goodness, it showed up in the newspaper the next week.
I haven't seen. I'll have to go back and look.
Yeah.
But kudos to you because the conversation got very heated, people around this region, whether it was the mayor of Live Oak, or the mayor of Placerville, or Auburn, or Sacramento, or West Sac, or even the vice mayor of Stockton showed up. That was the first time we actually invited Stockton to this. So we added them. So it was great to have representation there. But we're hearing the same exact problem throughout the region, that sure taxes and other business climate issues are affecting the economics and the prosperity of people in California. But the biggest problem that we have is housing affordability, that more and more of people's paychecks are going towards housing and make it harder and harder for businesses to retain talent in California. So that was a great conversation. I unfortunately didn't get to go to Whisker Warriors. I was proud to sponsor it and I wish I could have been there, but threw out my back and literally couldn't stand that night. So I do appreciate all that you've done to get, you know, in kind of Socks 2.0 and moving on and trying to do something great. It's really great to see like kind of a grassroots organization like yourselves that came together and really fill the need that was, you know, being done by one person on a shoestring budget and a dream, and you put, you know, so many people behind it and really made it something great. So thank you for all that you're doing. And then finally, as Chair of the Air District, I wasn't able to go and hand out tickets. Please, whoever decides on that thing next year, don't put it on the same day as the Air District meeting because that's two years in a row, but that's okay. But it was our second meeting with our new air pollution control officer, so I thought it was important to be there. We also did get a briefing on the electric highways and electric cities funding. So this is the Volkswagen settlement funding. Essentially, there was a big press conference, if you didn't see it, about six weeks ago that announced that Sacramento was the first electric city or that camera with the electric grid. And so basically, one of the things that Volkswagen has agreed to do is to fund a nonprofit that will then fund projects for electrification of highways and main thoroughfares. And Sacramento was picked as one of the first places to get, I want to say like 40 million it was, the number that they're throwing out. But it's not actually the city, and the city has some influence, the Air District has some influence on what projects they do and where they do them. But it's this other organization that Volkswagen founded and then is staffed with former Volkswagen employees that will actually pick the projects. So there's an opportunity for everyone in the region to try to get at some of this funding to put in more high-speed recharging stations throughout the region. So to me, it seems like a huge opportunity for our business park and some other places to look at competing for the funding. But what you heard in the media that it was the city of Sacramento is a little misleading because it's not, like the city didn't get the money, the Air District didn't get the money, no entity got the money. Organizations and companies and nonprofits will then apply for funding through this organization, which is escaping me what the name is, but it's a 501(c)(3) subsidiary of Volkswagen. So more to come when I have it. They really just kind of talked at us about kind of the idea. For those who don't remember, the new air pollution control officer for Sacramento was the deputy executive director at California Air Resources Board. And his big kind of claim to fame was he discovered, his team discovered the Volkswagen trick that they were doing for SMOG, and he was also the one that negotiated the settlement for California. So he was kind of at the driver's seat throughout this whole thing, and so hopefully we have a little bit of an inside track on some of this additional funding. So with that, Cyrus, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick note, earlier this afternoon, I was able to accompany the mayor and vice mayor at our police.
Go ahead, go ahead.
At our police station for a presentation by students from Cordova, Rancho Cordova Elementary School and Mather Heights Elementary School. Some few hundred thank you cards had been sent to the police department. And it was very thoughtful and heartfelt action by these students, especially at a time when our officers have been grieving the loss of one of their own, who was killed in the line of duty last week in the county area. So just wanted to respectfully request the council if we could adjourn in the memory of Officer Robert French, who was killed in the line of duty last week. And also take this opportunity and thank our police department and police officers for the amazing work they do in the community.
Thank you, Cyrus. And I did write down to adjourn in the memory. But I also did want to thank Asha Doughton and everybody that made sure that Lynda and I got over there and got to spend some time with the police officers and the students. And it was really nice that they were able to do that. And they even, there was a joke because there were a lot of boxes with the cards in them, and one of the officers commented, oh, because one of them looked like donuts. He's like, oh, did you guys bring us some donuts? And they actually did. So it was really nice of them. So I do want to recognize all of the student leaders from Mather and Rancho Cordova that were able to spend some time with our police. And they left them in their briefing room, where every day for the police, they start there and do their briefing before they leave. So they put posters up, they put the cards up there. I want to say, what'd they say, about 2,000 cards were turned in?
I think they said 2,000.
That they collected from students. And so hopefully our officers get, you know, get the idea that, you know, while they have a really tough job and it's not an easy thing to do, day in, day out, to write tickets or arrest people or do some of the other things, that we do appreciate you and we do hope that you stay safe when you're out there. So, and so with that, we will be adjourning in the memory of Deputy French. And so with that, we will move on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items, consistent matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. And I believe, yes, we do have one that needs to be pulled, which is 13.4. Just to have a brief discussion. But is there anything else that needs to be pulled off of the consent calendar?
Okay. In hearing none, I will move approval of items 13.1, 13.2, and 13.3, which is the Sawborn Farms access and parking improvements. And thank Albert for working so hard with Sawborn, with Sean and his team, to ensure that the entrance is more accessible and more attractive for everybody, whether they are driving or bicycling or walking in. So thank you very much.
Really quick, before we entertain a second, council.
I just wanted to note with the motion that that includes the approval of waiving the second reading and adopting ordinance nine, 2017, adopting the property maintenance code.
Yes.
Did we have any comments on the consent calendar item, including that one?
No.
Okay. Okay, with that, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Budge, a second by Gatewood. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanders is absent. Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously with one abstention? No, it's not even considered abstention, he's absent. And so with that, we'll move on to 13.4. I don't think we really need a discussion or presentation on this item. At this point, only councilman Gatewood and I are going to be the only ones that would be attending the League of California City.
We need to let Stacy read it in so people know what we're talking about.
So the subject is resolution reaffirming the designation of Mayor Donald Terry as the voting delegate and designating the alternate for the 2017 League of California Cities Annual Conference to be held September 13th through the 15th, 2017, in Sacramento, California.
Well, if you're both going, why don't we make Garrett the alternate?
That's what I was going to suggest, yeah. Because I think we had David and I, or I and then David, and then you, and now David and you aren't going, so we were going to, yeah. So, because you're not going either, Bob, right?
I'm going, yeah.
You are?
Well, Bob's going too.
Okay. So it's the will of the council.
The only thing Garrett needs to know is that voting usually takes place on Saturday morning. So I think it's Saturday in the morning.
I was going to say, I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was Friday midday.
Okay.
My only issue is I might miss the Cordova Community Council luncheon to go, but I have it on my calendar to be there, so.
Okay. So I mean, if we're going to designate somebody, we should designate somebody who's going to be there.
Right. No, I will be there. I will be there. Okay.
Okay. Then I will make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
No, second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanders is absent. Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I've been warned to say that, so I will. Okay, moving on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Do we have, well, we only have one item, so does anybody want to pull that item? Okay. Do we have any public comment cards on this?
No.
Okay. Let me open the public hearing. And again, we have no comment cards, we have no questions. I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Okay. Then I will move that we adopt Resolution 118-2017, approving the parcel split at 3390 Sunrise Boulevard.
Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, second?
Second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanders is absent. Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. It's always nice when we all agree. We do not have any public hearing items, we do not have any regular calendar items. Do we have any requests for future agenda items from council? Okay? So with that, we will be adjourning in the memory of Deputy Robert French, and we stand adjourned. In record time.